Okay. You too. All right. Good?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. I am pleased to call to order the April 5th, 2019 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners and ask the man of the hour, Mr. Dean Dorton, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Note the presence of all three commissioners and ask if there are any opening commissioners' comments. Okay. Then we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the March 21st, 2019 meeting minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners?
Second.
Commissioner Gail, second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, Mr. Cochrane. I have some exciting videos.
Yes.
I understand.
Good morning, commissioners. We're here to unveil our instructional videos for voters for the upcoming primary, our new system. All Montgomery County voters will be voting on a new voter mark, verifiable paper ballot, in the coming May 21st primary election. Our old machines had reached the end of their useful life. We had purchased them in 1996. And in addition, new state law is that by 2020, all voters in Pennsylvania will have to be voting on a system with a verifiable paper trail that can be audited or recounted. We're ahead of that game. And I'm going to just show the videos and we'll go from there. So, the first one. Montgomery County will have a new voter mark, paper balloting system with a verifiable paper trail in place on the May 21st primary election. In addition to tables and privacy screens for filling out ballots...
There will be at least one ballot scanning device and one ballot marking device at each polling location.
The ballot marking device will be available for voters who need it. It has a touchscreen and comes with an adapter that is compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Machine operators are assigned to each polling location to assist voters whenever necessary.
Most voters will be given a pre-printed ballot by a poll worker at their polling location. It has all of the contestants and candidates on it.
You will be directed to an area with privacy screens where you can mark your ballot using a pen that will be provided.
When you have completed your selection, please take the time to review your ballot and verify if you made the choices that you intended to and that you voted for the proper number of candidates on the ballot.
Once you have completed marking your ballot and have verified your choices, proceed to the ballot scanning device and insert it into the scanner.
The scanner will read the ballot and deposit it into a secure internal compartment within the device. The machine operator at your polling location will be happy to demonstrate how to complete a ballot.
Some voters will want or need to use the ballot marking device to cast a ballot. Tell your machine operator that you wish to use the ballot marking device and an accessible voting session will be created for you.
There are several ways to use the ballot marking device, including a touchscreen and audio tactile interface device, a Sid and Puff device, or a paddle button device. A touchscreen and an audio tactile interface device will be at every polling location.
Voters who use a Sid and Puff device or a paddle button device should bring those devices with them to the polling location and they will interface with the ballot marking device.
All of these devices will provide instructions for how to add write-ins. They will also provide means for the voter to review their selections. Once the voter is satisfied with their selections, the ballot marking device will print a marked paper ballot. If the voter needs assistance inserting the ballot into the scanner, the machine operator will place the ballot into a privacy sleeve and insert the paper ballot into the scanner.
It will automatically be deposited into the same compartment as all the other ballots. There is a separate compartment inside the machine for storing ballots marked with write-in votes.
After the poll is closed, the ballot scanning device will print a results tape that will show the number of ballots cast and the calculated results of all the voter ballots that were cast on that machine. Okay. There are two additional videos. I'm going to just show one of them. There's a much more detailed video about accessible voting. And then this is what people should do if they encounter problems. ... circumstances in which a warning message will be displayed.
The scanning device will notify you with a series of short audible beeps combined with a warning message on the screen should any of the following occur.
The ballot is blank. The ballot is undervoted. The ballot is overvoted. The ballot was misread.
A blank ballot message is displayed when the scanner does not detect any voter choices on the ballot. The blank ballot warning is provided to alert the voter in case they accidentally omitted making any selections.
A blank ballot message gives the voter the option to return the ballot or cast the ballot as is.
If the voter wants to return the ballot and make their selections, they should press the return button and place the returned ballot back into the manila folder.
The voter will then be directed back to the area for privacy screen to complete their selection.
If the voter wishes to cast a blank ballot, they need only to press the cast button and the scanner will accept it and place it in the secure ballot box with all the other ballots.
Please note, once the ballot is cast, it cannot be retrieved and the voter cannot receive a replacement ballot. An undervoted ballot message is displayed when the scanner detects that the voter did not select all of the number of candidates permitted in one or more races, or selected a candidate or candidates in some races but not others.
Just like the blank ballot, the voter can choose to have an undervoted ballot returned or cast as is.
If the voter chooses to have the ballot returned so that they can complete their selection, they should press the return button and place the returned ballot back into the manila folder. If the voter wishes to cast an undervoted ballot, they need only press the cast button and the scanner will accept it and place it in the secure ballot box with all of the other ballots.
Again, please note that once a ballot is cast, it cannot be retrieved and the voter cannot receive a replacement ballot.
An overvoted ballot warning occurs when the scanner detects that more than the allowed number of candidates or ballot proposals have been selected. The voter can choose to have the overvoted ballot returned by pressing the return button. The voter will then receive a replacement ballot and the original ballot will be marked in the ballot. A voter may receive a maximum of three replacement ballots. The voter may also choose to cast the overvoted ballot as is by pressing the cast button. Please note, if the voter chooses to cast an overvoted ballot, the system will only count votes for those races that were filled out properly. A misread message displays when the system does not recognize all of the features on the ballot, or the ballot has stray marks, or selections haven't been sufficiently filled in.
This can also occur if the ballot is fed into the machine improperly, smudged, folded, balled up, or somehow damaged.
A misread ballot will automatically be returned. The voter may choose to correct any obvious problems and feed it back into the scanner or return the ballot to the machine operator and receive a replacement ballot. Again, the voter may receive a maximum of three replacement ballots. And those are the videos. We can, people can view them on our website at montco PA backslash voting system, our YouTube channel, Montgomery County PA, Facebook, at Montgomery dot county dot PA. And we'll have links to it on our Twitter feed, at @MontcoPA.
Great. Wonderful. Well, those are, I think, going to be very, very helpful. And I think we have some folks that we should thank here today. I know Mr. Doyle is back there in that room. Maybe he could step out for a minute if he can hear me. Mr. John Doyle works at the Norristown Area High School. Come on out, just for a minute.
All right. You've got to do that, right?
And I know you led a large group of students in making these videos, which is just a wonderful project for the students. I can't think of a better way for students to get involved in supporting our democratic process here in our country. And what a great time to learn about it, just as most of them are becoming eligible to vote. So I hope that they enjoyed working on this.
Yeah, I think they had a great time.
Did they? Good.
And they enjoyed actually the editing process and sort of discovering what choices to make on the screen that make sense.
That's great. Are any of them here today with you?
None of them are with me. They're all actively shooting interviews right now back at school for our regular program.
Okay, great. Well, let me just read their names. Ashley Schools, Valeria Sanchez, Tristan Maines, Jemaya Satterwaite, Santino Carlamango, Brianna Adams, and Kenya Prado. So just want to please extend our thanks to all of them. We really appreciate everything they did. This was obviously a lot of work.
Yeah, I'll do it. And that's great. And they'll get to see the video, so they'll hear your voice say it.
Good. That's great. All right. Thank you, John. And then just a couple of other announcements. I just want to remind everyone that we have our first conversations with the commissioners at the Upper Marion Township Building on Tuesday, April 9th. There will be a voting demo that starts at 6:00, so you can actually get your hands on this system. And then our normal town hall will start at 7:00. There'll also be a demo here in Norristown on April the 13th from 10:00 until 1:00 at the Norristown Public Library. And again, people can just come in anytime between 10:00 and 1:00 and get a chance to experience this system firsthand, see what it's like to hold the ballots, mark the ballots, put them in the scanner, et cetera. And there'll be several more town halls. And of course, we do have our first voting, public voting demo this Saturday, April the 6th, starting at 9:00 at the Amber Borough Hall. And people are welcome to attend that as well. So we hope a lot of people will come out and get a chance to see this thing before we actually roll it out for the primary, which is May the 21st. And the more people that come out to these demos, the more helpful it is to us because it will help us identify and resolve any kinks in the system that we've put together. So the more people that can come, you're really actually helping make sure the system works properly on May the 21st. And Ms. Doris, can you come to the podium, please? We don't normally take public comment, but given the importance of this, I will allow you to...
It's nothing to ask, because I can just stand right here.
Okay.
I just hope that we will have enough people at the voting polls to show the people as they come in to vote, because this seems to be a lot. And here in Norristown, you know, I don't know if they know the times or whatever and places where to go to learn. So I do hope that we have enough people to be at the voting polls when it's time to vote and to be on time. That's a lot I hear.
Do you want to talk about that later?
That's a good point to make. We have a lot of poll workers who work throughout the county, over 2,000 on Election Day. Poll worker training this year will be mandatory for every poll worker. And there are 10 separate trainings set up around the county for those poll workers to attend, so they're trained and well-versed in the whole system for Election Day.
And, you know, everyone who's watching, listening in this room can be incredibly helpful by publicizing to their networks, friends, neighbors, family members, the opportunity for people to come out and experience this. So again, I'll just say one more time for Norristown, there'll be a demo on April the 13th from 10:00 to 1:00 at the Norristown Public Library. So hopefully you can help push that out. Yeah, that would be great.
Is it for the county or the state?
Just the county. So yes, this new voting system applies just to Montgomery County voters. Elections in Pennsylvania are run by counties. And so this is a system that will be in place here for Montgomery County. Other counties will have different systems and different approaches. Hopefully you're only voting in one county, though. So you only need to learn one system. All right. With that, we will move on to Mr. Dorton with an exciting announcement. Good morning.
As you know, last month you approved a warrant to allow the financing team of the county to move ahead with the bond issue. It was structured to fund the capital plan with new money, and we also had a refi opportunity that was explained in previous presentations. That sale was conducted yesterday, and Dan Kozloff, our financial advisor, is here today to walk you through the results.
Good morning. Thank you, Dean. It's great to be in front of you all again with good news to report of a very successful bond transaction for the county yesterday. As Dean mentioned, we came to market yesterday with a total of $117 million worth of general obligation bonds for the county. They were split into three series. Series A bonds, in total $42 million, were issued to fund ongoing capital projects as part of the county's five-year capital plan. The Series B bonds were issued to finance bridge and road construction throughout the county. And the Series C bonds totaling approximately $62 million were issued to complete an advance refunding of outstanding county debt to recognize debt service savings that were available, given the current market conditions. Real quickly, in specifics, the As and Bs were sold together. And again, the As were to fund the capital projects throughout the county for the five-year capital plan. The $15 million or so of the Bs, the project funds of that are going to be used to fund road and bridge projects, and those will be supported by revenues that the county receives from the Pennsylvania Department of Motor Vehicles, vehicle registration fees. The county used a similar structure as that in the Series A of 2017 bonds that were issued two years ago. The Series C bonds refund two bonds that were issued in 2010 by the county. These bonds are a special type of bond called Build America Bonds. They were created coming out of the Great Recession as a way for municipal governments to issue bonds on a taxable basis, which broadens the market and universe of investors for those bonds, but to receive a net cost of tax exempt. And the way they did that is the county issues taxable bonds and the federal government provides a subsidy on the interest cost of those bonds equal to 35%. However, in recent years, that subsidy has been cut into by the federal government through something called sequestration as they try to cut down the future federal deficit. That sequestration has resulted in the current fiscal year, that 35% subsidy being reduced to 32.83%. And for the next fiscal year, federal fiscal year that'll begin October 1st of this year, that subsidy will be 32.94% as opposed to 35%. Seeing that that's been happening since 2013, obviously this 35% subsidy is a bit at risk. It's been cut into a little bit, but it's not to say that it can't be impacted going forward. So based on the current market conditions, which allow for the county to access the market at very attractive interest rates, is combined with the county's strong standing in the market, not just the name brand that it is, but the AAA rating and folks really being eager to get their hands on county debt, it gave us an opportunity to refund the outstanding Build America Bonds and achieve debt service savings. The AAA rating of the county, it still feels really good to be able to say that. Just to go back into the story and how we got there, back in July of 2012, the county was downgraded for the first time from AAA to AA1 by Moody's, AA1 being one notch below AAA. And when the new administration came in back in 2013, we began working very hard with the administration and the current administration to work our way back to AAA. We've had numerous meetings and calls with Moody's in that regard. We invited them down to the county in 2016 and gave them a tour of all the different things going on with the county. We met with them along with the commissioners, actually, right in this room. And at that point, they reaffirmed the AA1 credit with a stable outlook. About a year later than that, in 2017, Moody's put the county on a positive outlook, which was very good. And then a year after that, this was about May, around this time last year, we got the news from the county that, from Moody's, that they upgraded the county back to its AAA level and they reaffirmed this rating for this issuance as well. And that had terrific results in the market for us yesterday. The Moody's report, which is out there and available, talks about several of the strengths of the county that really puts the county at this AAA level, includes the diverse tax base, the strong financial position, the healthy cash and reserve balances, manageable leverage position in terms of debt and pensions, strong management that adheres to fiscal policies, multi-year budgeting. And it also talks a lot about the fact that management has been successful in restoring a healthy fund balance over the significant draws that occurred back in 2011 and 2012. And they talk about the budgeting and the practice of keeping that fund balance, and they call it a healthy surplus that has been attained by the county. And they pay a lot of attributes and positive remarks to the administration and everything that the county has been doing to right the financial ship of the county. The results of the sale. Again, we came to market yesterday. We got terrific results. We were all very pleased with it. We priced very favorably and allowed the county to borrow money to fund its projects as well as complete the refunding and receive strong savings on that refunding. For the As and Bs, we sold those at 11:00 AM yesterday. They were sold in a competitive online bid platform. We received nine different bids from different banks, which is a strong outcome in terms of the number of banks submitting bids. The winning bidder was Mezural Financial at an all-in cost of 2.94%. The difference between that bid and the next highest bid or the next best bid was under two basis points, that's under 0.02%. And the difference between the winning bid and the lowest bid, the ninth bid, was just 0.06%. So nice tight bids there. On the refunding, we sold those 30 minutes later. It was a busy morning yesterday. And we again received strong bidding on that with nine banks submitting bids. The winning bidder there was Raymond James. They had an all-in cost of 2.37%. There, it was very tight between the winning bid and the next cover bid. I think that's the millionth of a percent there that it was under. And the difference between the winning bid and the ninth bid was just four basis points or 0.04%. The next slide here, Slide 9, just shows where the market was relative to when we've sold prior transactions. You can see on the chart above, the darker blue line is in a really good place versus the lighter blue line, which is where the market was last year when we came to market. The market has rallied. We've seen the front end of the yield curve increase a bit, and that generally is going to follow what Fed funds does. But on the long end of the yield curve, we're right in really low and attractive levels for the market, and that's driven by market demand out there and folks putting their money into municipal bonds. Slide 10, the pricing results. Lot of information on this page. The thing to focus on here, this is for the As and Bs, the new money bonds, is the far-right column of each of the tables. We priced just four to five basis points, so 0.04 to 0.05% over what is published every day as the high-grade AAA MMD index for the municipal market. Just so you know, it's rare to see bonds priced right on top of that index or even through that index. That index is a basket of different credits that are traded in the market. Most of those credits are very large. They're state AAA credits. To give you a sense of where the county priced, over the past month, the state of Maryland, which is one of the bellwether AAA credits in the country, they are triple AAA. They have AAA ratings from Moody's, S&amp;P, and Fitch. They came to market and they priced at a spread of about one to three basis points over the AAA MMD. The county was right on top of them. So we're really pleased with how the county priced on these, on both of the, all of the series yesterday. And it, again, shows the strength and what that AAA does for the county, keeping it going forward. Obviously, the county will be issuing more debt and the benefit of that AAA will continue to pile up for the county. The Series C bonds on page 11, priced after the Series A and B, these are the refundings. What you see there in the shaded area, don't be alarmed by those spreads. The reason for those spreads, if you look at the fourth column over titled coupon, you see there, the coupons there are 2.625, 2.75, 2.875, in the 3% range. The other bonds in the AAA index is a 5% coupon scale. These obviously are not after the call date 5% coupons. And having these lower coupons here, we structured the bid parameters and the rules on the bid very intentionally. Having these lower coupons is what drove the savings for the county on the refinancing. And we were very pleased with those savings. I'll talk about that in a slide or two here. But the pricing there that you see, you know, obviously much higher than the three to five basis points over the AAA MMD, that is to be expected with 3% coupons versus 5% coupons. So these also priced very well. As you can see, in the, prior to the 11 years in the unshaded part, priced just similar, very similarly to how the As and Bs price. But then when you start getting those lower coupons, those spreads widen out. But again, that's what allows us to get the savings that we achieved on the refunding. Looking at the transactions in terms of what's the impact on the county's debt service, page 12. Page 12 looks at the As and Bs. These are the new money components. We structured these in a way, if you see the graph at the bottom, the gray is the existing county debt service going out for the next 20 years. There's a significant drop-off in that debt service beginning in 2024. What we did here was we intentionally pushed debt into what we call the post-cliff years to take advantage of that. There still has to be some debt service in the early years based on the Pennsylvania, the rules that govern local government issuers in Pennsylvania. But we structured that to be minimal amounts in the years pre-cliff, and then we pushed more debt service into the post-cliff years, which also is good from a budgeting perspective. The yield curve is very flat, so it doesn't cost much more money to go out a little bit further. It's actually as flat as it's been in 10 years in terms of the yield curve. So we're very pleased with this structure. Onto the refunding, the refinancing, the Series C. These are great numbers, and I'm thrilled to report these. The gross budgetary debt service savings over the next 20 years that this refinancing provided the county is over $5 million, about $5.1 million. That's on a gross budgetary basis. The current fiscal year savings is about $160,000. That's because we're in April, so it's a partial year. And the full fiscal year savings, budgetary debt service savings for the balance out through 2039 is close to $250,000. That is terrific results. It's better than we even thought that the county was going to do when we provide these numbers to Dean and staff and others. We like to be a bit conservative there, don't want to overpromise, but this really overachieved and outperformed, and we're thrilled with it. On a present value basis, so taking those budgetary dollars and putting them in today's dollars, close to $4 million, just a hair under $4 million of debt service savings. That equates to 5.86% of refunded par. Just from a bookmarking perspective, the GFOA, which is the large organization out there for municipal governments, they set a best practice that they would like to, they want to see refundings greater than 3% of savings. So we're almost double that. So a very terrific result yesterday on the refunding. The way those savings are structured is on a level basis. So again, after this year's, through about $250,000 or so a year of budgetary debt service savings. The last slide here just shows the net result of the county after the sale. You have, column B is the existing debt service. You see that cliff in '24 go from $46 million to $29 million. You then have the savings shown, that's that $250,000 a year or so. The post-refunding debt service, you then layer on the new money debt service, the Series A and the Series B that we sold yesterday, to get to the result shown on the far-right column, column G, which is the post-issuance debt service. So again, all in all, a terrific, terrific sale yesterday for the county. It was a pleasure working with staff as always, and PFM really appreciates the opportunity to continue to be the financial advisor of the county. It's, these type of results and working with the county is something I'm very proud of.
Great. Well, thank you so much. It's very exciting to hear this. And what a wonderful story for the taxpayers of this county who are actually, have an opportunity to save some money on this debt service. For folks that weren't here, when this administration came in back in 2012, this administration inherited a lot of very unusual and somewhat risky debt service vehicles. There were swaps and other instruments that weren't able to guarantee what the county's debt exposure would be going into the future. And we had been methodically, starting with then Commissioners Shapiro and Richardson Castor, undoing those vehicles when possible and getting rid of them and replacing them. And in the course of doing that, have saved quite a bit of money for the county over these years and put our debt service in a much more stable and now very predictable future for us. And so we are able to budget more confidently and throughout all of this, save money for the taxpayers in the county, which is really the most important thing. And balancing that with still being able to repair our infrastructure, which was the other side of this coin, that we inherited an enormous amount of infrastructure in desperate need of repair. So thank you for your great work. Thank you, Dean, and your team. This is really exciting. So pleased that we can continue to find opportunities to save money even as we go forward in a lot of, all the capital projects that we know are so necessary to provide the kinds of services to our constituents that they demand and deserve.
If I could just add one thing, the bond council on the transaction, which was also a large contributor to making the success with Saul Ewing... a large contributor to making the success with Saul Ewing, Sylvia Shin is here from Saul Ewing. Her partner, George Magnata, and their team also were a big piece of this.
I want to thank PFM and Saul Ewing, but I also want to acknowledge our senior leadership, Dean D'Orton, Lee Saltizziak, Barbara O'Malley. I know you guys work tirelessly. You keep us on track. So, I want to thank you guys, and this is a great result for the taxpayers of Montgomery County.
Thank you, Dan. Mr. D'Orton, one quick question. The annual savings generated through debt service due to the Series C of $250,000 a year. In forecasted budgeting that we did here internally, was there a number that, obviously that's better savings than we anticipated, that you were factoring in for budget purposes?
Yeah, if we did any forecasting up to this point, it would have been inclusive of what we thought the debt service was going to be on the two series that we refied. So, in reforecasting, we would adjust for the new debt, and it would be approximately $250,000 lower than what we had anticipated in prior models.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Stein.
Yes. Once again, we find that we have a request for a TAFRA, Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, a request from the Montgomery County Higher Education and Health Authority on behalf of Philadelphia Presbyterian Homes. They are seeking to issue $65 million worth of bonds in order to work on a project known as Rital Waters owned by Rital Park. It will be continuing care retirement facility, part of the Rital Park Independent Living Units. And as always with these, there is no obligation on the county.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby approve the project for Philadelphia Presbyterian Homes as described in this resolution, and approves the issuance of the bonds by the Montgomery County Higher Education and Health Authority for the financing of the project? Be it further resolved that the approvals and declarations in this resolution shall in no way pledge or otherwise obligate the credit or taxing power of the county, nor shall the county be liable for the payment of principal, interest, or premium, if any, on any obligations issued to finance the project, nor shall the county have any obligation or liability whatsoever with respect to the project. This resolution shall take effect on the date of adoption here. Move by Commissioner Lawrence, second by Commissioner Gale. Any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none. We'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none. Motion carries. Ms. Holt?
Good morning. All right. Good morning, Commissioners. You have a resolution here to authorize the application for a Department of Conservation and Natural Resources grant, the C2P2 program for conservation easement and trail easement in the amount of 455 acres of land in New Hanover and Upper Frederick Townships, and it includes a 1.65 mile trail easement in those townships as well. So, the property that we are interested in applying to conserve is Camp Laughing Waters. It is currently owned by the Girl Scouts. It is located in the western part of the county along the Swamp Creek. It has a significant portion of riparian habitat along the Swamp Creek. It also has some farmed areas of the property. It's within a natural areas inventory identified conservation landscapes, which are identified because they are large forested tracts, stream corridors. They include habitat for rare plants and animals in Montgomery County. So, you can see them on the map there. It's identified. On this map, you'll see the Swamp Creek and our Sunrise Mill, historic site location, as well as the other green conserved land in the area. The orange land on this map is preserved farmland through our farmland preservation program. And the property that we're speaking about is identified in purple. So, it's a number of different tracts of land, but all owned by the Girl Scouts. This is just a closer in view of that. It shows the trail alignment for the future development of the Sunrise Trail on the southern part of the property. And you'll see Bob Whalen Park in Upper Frederick Township to the right there, and then the Swamp Creek through pretty much the center of the property. So, the property has almost 300 acres of woodland on it. It's identified, as I said, as a conservation landscape in our natural areas inventory, further identified in our Monco 2040 comprehensive plan, and our future land use map as a conservation opportunity area. It's also adjacent to other preserved land, offering a large tract of land, large area of the western part of the county being preserved contiguous, and the 1.65 miles of the trail. This is the conservation easement. This is a draft of what would be in the conservation easement. The different hatch markings indicate different levels of protection. The diagonal lines show the high protection area where no future development would be permitted. The hashed area kind of in the middle of the property here is a standard protection area, as is this area down here and this area up here where farming is permitted, as well as expansion of camp uses. In addition, there are, there's the potential for three new homes. It's all described here. Natural lands is proposed to be the inspector and enforcer of the easement in perpetuity. The conservation easement and the trail easement run in perpetuity with the land. The Girl Scouts or a future landowner would be required to maintain the property as described in the conservation easement. The total grant request of DCNR would be $1.15 million. This would entail a commitment of $2.76-7 million in matching funds. The commitment would be phased over three years with DCNR and the Girl Scouts, and we would continue to seek additional grant and municipal funds to help support the matching of this grant application.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to submit an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the Camp Laughing Waters property easement acquisition project? Be it further resolved that the grant agreement signature page may be signed on behalf of Montgomery County by Jody Holton, Executive Director of the Montgomery County Planning Commission, and further that if the county is awarded the grant, the grant agreement signature page, signed by Ms. Holton, will become the executed signature page for the grant agreement, and the county will be bound by the grant agreement. In addition, any amendment to the grant agreement may be signed on behalf of the grantee by Ms. Holton, and the county will be bound by said amendment.
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Lawrence, second by Commissioner Gale. Ms. Holton, this is giving you a lot of power in this resolution. So, I have a few questions.
I'm doing your direction.
First of all, this seems like a pretty unique opportunity for us to preserve a very large area. Could you go back to that slide that had the, no, keep going back to the, yeah, okay. So, the parcels that are in green on there, those are permanently preserved open space.
That's correct.
So, that park, for instance, that you mentioned, right?
Right. It's a combination of either parkland or conservation easements that, in many cases, our open space program helped to fund.
Okay. And then the yellow are already preserved farms.
Yep.
So, this would really help fill out an area there that would be quite substantial.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great. What is the impression from the two municipalities that are involved? Have we gotten feedback from them about this?
Both are positive about the conservation easement and the trail. We're working with New Hanover Township and discussing the project with them and hoping to get their support. They have an open space fund from the township that could contribute to this project. They're considering their options. Upper Frederick is also interested. They don't have an open space fund, but I know they're as well. It's, this is part of their long-range land use planning to continue to keep this as rural resource area. So...
And I assume the Girl Scouts are supportive of this project.
Yeah. In terms of the Girl Scouts, this is one of two camps that they have in the five county southeast Pennsylvania region. And the other one that they have is Shelley Ridge, and that's only 100 acres right outside of Mequon, also in the county. So, this 455 acres is really a tremendous resource for the Girl Scouts and for the southeast region of Pennsylvania to be able to send your kids to this camp so close to our populated areas. Otherwise, you're going to the Poconos, or you're going to Lehigh Valley, or somewhere farther afield. So, they've made a commitment to reinvest in this camp and to continue their operations in the long term.
And has our open space board made a formal recommendation?
Yes, I should have mentioned that. The open space advisory board recommends that this resolution be approved.
Okay. And then in terms of the cost to the county, can you talk about how that's factored in to our budget going forward, or if it was factored in?
Right. So, in our, we have a one-year adopted budget and then a five-year plan. Within the five-year plan, we had money set aside for conservation and open space program as sort of described in the open space expansion strategic plan that we adopted in 2015. That money, this actual commitment would occur in 2020, 2021, and 2022 if we were awarded the grant and we found some, the full grant award. So, it is in that programmed budget. However, it's not the adopted budget, but that was the commitment that we had discussed in the strategic plan to expand our open space and parks properties.
Okay, great. Well, it is a little bit larger sum of money than we would typically put forward for something like this, but I think that this opportunity is unique and, given its location, extremely impactful for our county. So, I intend to be a guest vote on this, and thank you.
Thank you.
Can you talk about the two trails and where they would link?
Right. So, the Sunrise Mill Trail, we recently are almost complete with a feasibility study. That's the blue dotted line there. That comes out of Schwanksville off of the Perkeomen Trail and would proceed through the Sunrise Mill property, most of which is county-owned, and then out to the Girl Scouts camp. There is a small yellow dash line, which would be a connection to the Bob Whalen Public Park, Municipal Park there. This trail, the blue line, sort of stops at the edge of the black line because that was the extent of our feasibility study. But it, on our comprehensive plan, is shown continuing out to a West County trail that would ultimately connect back up to Green Lane Reservoir and then down to Pottstown. That portion of trail doesn't have a feasibility study with it yet, but that's the grand plan.
Yes?
Can you please touch on the advantages of applying for the DCNR grant this year as opposed to a future year, if we deferred to a future year?
Right. I mean, so this is a property that we've had long discussions with the Girl Scouts, ranging back two decades now. And the willingness to put a trail easement on the southern portion of the property was not always there. So, we have a good moment in time with the Girl Scouts, the property owner. And then we also have, DCNR is interested in the property, has been talking with us about it. We could wait until next year, but there's no guarantee that the price would stay the same, nor is there a guarantee that we would have the same interest on the municipality's side, even though they haven't made an actual numeric commitment to the financial budget of this. They are interested and willing to be a partner. So, I think it's a matter of timing.
And the partnership with New Hanover Township's Open Space Fund, that'll help us in the scoring for the application?
We're hopeful that they'll pass a similar resolution that would say that they would have some sort of financial commitment to this grant application, and that would occur in the next few weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Any public comment?
I just have one question.
Can you come, okay, you need to come up. Identify yourself, please. No, 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 sir. It's being videoed, so you do need to, you know.
I just have one question. Were there any appraisals?
Mr. Casasio.
Yes.
Please identify yourself.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Stan Casasio, Flower Town, P8625 Creek Lane. My only question, was there any appraisals done to ascertain the value of the property? I just wanted to know that.
So, we normally do not allow questions in this period. We would be happy to get with you afterwards and let you know the details of that, but I can say that yes, there were appraisals done, and we can give you the information about that.
It's required.
Yeah. It's all required. It's part of the grant process and all of that. So, all right. Any other public comment? All right. Hearing none. We will move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, Mr. Saltizziak.
No more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm with you again.
Ms. Holt?
All right. You have a resolution in front of you to approve a community planning assistance contract with Upper Marion Township. This is a three-year contract, split 50/50 with our municipality of Upper Marion. The length of the contract began January 1, 2019, and continues until December 31 of 2021. The total cost of the contract is $56,133. And split 50/50, we'll be working with Upper Marion Township on the Moore Park Master Plan, a business park in Upper Marion. We'll also be working on DeKalb Pike Stretches Gate Plan in the coming years. That is all.
Okay. Is there a motion? Well timed, Mr. Bonner. Is there a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to approve the contract for municipal planning assistance outlined below, and the proper county officials are hereby authorized and directed to execute the same?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Gale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Ms. Holton, what does this bring? Do you know off the top of your head our total number of contracts with our municipalities?
This is a renewal, but we have 36 municipalities under contract and four regional planning contracts.
Great.
The highest level we've ever been at.
Yeah, that's great. And it's really great that we're getting that kind of coordinated approach. Good. Any public, I'm sorry, any other board comment? Any public comment? All right. Hearing none. We'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Saltizziak.
Okay. Today, we have three advertisements. The first is an RFP on behalf of assets and infrastructure to provide a full-time onsite construction oversight and inspection during the replacement of County Bridge 150 located at, on Camp Wawa Road over the east branch of the Perkeomen Creek in Lower Southford Township. The successful firm will provide a quality, I'm sorry, qualified consultant to provide full-time onsite construction oversight and inspections during the replacement of the county bridge over the east branch of the Perkeomen Creek in Lower Southford Township. The contract will be awarded to the highest rated firm. Number two is an RFP on behalf of Health and Human Services for a strategic plan consultant. The successful firm will assist in the development of a strategic plan for the newly developed Health and Human Services Department. They will also conduct an analysis and assessment of current operations, and they will also formulate a strategy and execution plan for the departmental integration. Number three is a bid on behalf of the Sheriff's Office for a new prisoner transport bus. The bus will be used to transport prisoners from the Montgomery County Correctional Facility to the courthouse. This will be replacing a 2005 bus, and the contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. And as a reminder, all RFPs and bids are available on the county's public purchase website at moncoba.org/purchasing.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the preceding request for advertisements of RFPs and a bid as described by the Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Lee Saltizziak, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gale. Any board comment? Any public comment? Hearing none. We'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none. Motion carries. Award's a contract.
Yes. The first is a contract renewal for assets and infrastructure remediation services. The award goes to multiple firms. The contract provides for...
Excuse me. I can't hear a word he's saying. Seriously, I can't hear anything.
Try to speak up. The contract provides for environmental remediation consultants and contractors to be available to perform environmental investigative work and subsequent abatement work for the projects at county-owned facilities on an as-needed basis. The environmental remediation consultants are Element Environmental Solutions, Inc., GZA Geo Environmental, Inc., Eagle Industrial Hygiene Associates, Inc., ESC Mid-Atlantic LLC, Brightfields, Inc., Bluestone Environmental Group, Inc., Criterion Laboratories, Inc., AMEC Foster Wheeler Environmental and Infrastructure, Inc. And the environmental remediation contractors are Plymouth Environmental and Prime Group Remediation, Inc. This is the third renewal of three available renewals. Number two is a contract renewal for Health and Human Services for home-delivered meals. The award goes to multiple providers. The contract provides for home-delivered meals for older adults per RFP 1610 for the Aging Adult Services Division. The providers are Boyer Town Area Multi-Services, Inc., Colonial Neighborhood Council, Family Services of Montgomery County, Generations of Indian Valley, Monco Senior Adult Activity Center, and the Open Link. Pricing is per units, based on per units delivered, based on needs, and varies per provider, ranging from $6.10 and varies per provider, ranging from $6.10 to $7.51 per meal. This is the first of two optional annual renewals. Number three is a contract renewal, renewal for Health and Human Services for enrollment services, the, for multiple providers. The amount of the contract's total, $240,461. The contract provides for low-income residents' assistance in completing enrollment applications for state and federal benefit programs as per RFP 1551 for Aging and Adult Services Division. This is the second of two optional annual renewals. The providers are the Open Link, Aklamo, and VNA Community Services. Number four is a contract renewal for Human Resources for our Commercial Insurance Broker. The award goes to KMRD Partners, Inc., in the amount of $135,000. The contract provides for commercial insurance broker services as per RFP 1608 for property casualty fidelity bond, general liability umbrella, and other insurance coverages. This is the first of two available optional annual renewals. Number five is a contract renewal for Health and Human Services for a consultant. The award goes to Gregorio Consulting in the amount of $24,890. The contract provides for Trauma-Informed System of Care Initiative Consultant as per RFP 1802. This is the first of two optional annual renewals. Number six is an award for Health and Human Services for a vehicle. The award goes to New Holland Auto Group in the amount of $23,010. The contract provides for 2019 Ford Transit 150 van for use by the Office of Public Health. The vehicle is available on a PA CoStarz contract. Number seven is a contract award for the District Attorney, also for vehicles. The total of the contract is for $87,276.72. The contract provides for one 2019 Ford Escape, one 2019 GMC Acadia, and one 2019 Chevy Colorado. The vehicles are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Number eight is a contract award for public safety for a systems upgrade. The award goes to West Safety Solutions, Solutions Corporation in the amount of $123,374.38. The contract provides for an upgrade of the 10-digit phone lines that route into the emergency communications center. The contract also provides for the removal of the copper lines that are being phased out. The system is proprietary. Number nine is a contract award for assets and infrastructure for a security system. The award goes to Integrated Security Systems in the amount of $84,033.60. The contract provides for the furnishing and installation of security cameras, access control readers, computer equipment, and panels at Mul Grove. The services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Number 10 is a contract award for assets and infrastructure for a security system for the integrated security syst-, I'm sorry, and the award goes to Integrated Security Systems in the amount of $68,540. The contract provides for the furnishing and installation of security cameras, access control readers, computer equipment, and panels for the voter's warehouse. The services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Number 11 is a contract award for assets and infrastructure for parks' equipment. The award goes to Deere and Company in the amount of $143,199.62. The providers, this provides for the purchase of the equipment for use by the parks, trails, and historic sites. The equipment includes one mower, three gators, two tractors, two loaders, and two backhoes. The equipment is available through a PA state contract. Number 12 is a contract award for the Planning Commission for a consultant. The award goes to Stan Tech Consulting Services in the amount of $221,890.66. The contract provides for the right-of-way acquisition services for the Ridge Pike Improvement Project between Crescent Avenue and Northwestern Avenue in White Marsh and Springfield Townships. The RP was viewed by 14 firms with three responses received. The contract is awarded to the highest-rated firm. Contract is for two years. Number 13 is a contract amendment for assets and infrastructure for engineering. The award goes to Erdman and Anthony Associates, Inc., in the amount of $26,450.64. Pardon The contract provides for environmental studies, preliminary engineering, and final design construction for County Bridge 59, West Valley Green Road Bridge over the Bus Hickman Creek in White Marsh Township. The amendment provides for the study of three additional design alternatives with the, for, I'm sorry, with the alternative analysis report required by Penda. The revised contract is for $528,929.21. Number 14 is a contract amendment for IT for equipment. The award goes to CDW Government in the amount of $23,053. The contract provides for the additional IT equipment necessary to support the new voter system. The equipment is available through a PA CoStarz contract. Number 15 is the list in the back of the room, two contract renewals, five amendments for Health and Human Services. And there are two task force items. The first is a contract award for training. The award goes to FBI LITA, Inc., in the amount of $21,545. Contract provides for a three-step leadership training series for the executive-level law enforcement for Bucks County, and the training is proprietary. And number two is a contract award for maintenance for EBA engineering in the amount of $25,000. The contract provides for the acquisition of a 911 database address point implementation NEA, N E, NA compliant schema for the SEPA database that acquired regional pictometry imagery with the address point maps for the regional counties. These services are available on a PA CoStarz contract. That is all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the preceding awards of contract, as well as the contracts, on behalf of the southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force, as described by the Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Lee Soltizziak, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gale. Any board comment? Any public comment?
My name is Pauline Baccio from Towness and Township, and I'm talking about number 13, contact amendment for engineering. And it just seems like this is something that is so repetitive. This is for the West Valley Green Bridge, and that's been going on for so long, and I don't understand what, and I know you're not going to answer a question, so I'm not asking a question. I think it's a little silly. It's a bridge, okay? You go, you fix the bridge, cars go over it, and everybody's happy. And now you have to do an environmental study for it? Are you damming the water, a body of water underneath it? You know, I just think this is ridiculous to have these constant engineering costs. You know, I could go look at it for you if you want. My dad was in construction. I think I could give you a real good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. Hearing none. We'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none. Motion carries. All right, we will move to general public comment. Ms. Doris.
This is back to the voting. Doris Smith-Starks, a longtime residential person of Norristown, very active in the community. This is just back to the voting. This is the first time I saw the machine, so I really, really hope that we have good people that really know how to explain this and, because we have a lot of people that don't understand, a lot of people that cannot even read, and that goes for a lot of our seniors and whatnot. And there are different nationalities also of people. So I do hope that we will have qualified people to be able to explain this, you know, to the residents, so they will get a good understanding in how to vote. And I hope it don't ruin the people for not for continuing to vote down the line, because it seems like it's a lot of paperwork. I don't know how much paperwork. I will be at the library to see for myself. So anyway, though, I do hope we will have a successful part in voting with this new technique, and it don't interfere, you know, interfere with people's voting, because I am a really strong pusher for voting, and I, whether it's Democrat, Republican, whatever, I, you know, try to encourage people to get out and vote, because your vote does matter. So I do want people to understand. Okay? Thank you, love.
Thank you. Ms. Baccio?
No. Mr. Casasio.
Oh, okay. Oh, you were just getting up. I'm sorry.
Yes, just.
Stan Casasio, 625 Creek Lane in White Marsh. Isn't it great? It's election year this year. So much fun here. I'm here basically on behalf of my neighbors. They've asked me to come because of our frustration. As you know, I've met with you, you've met with our neighbors, and we're appreciative over the last two years. Of course, in White Marsh, I tell my friends when they come to visit me, you need three things: plenty of fuel in your car, food and snacks, and if you've got kids, to change a diaper, or games for them to play, because you're not going to get from here to there very quickly. This morning even coming here, it took me roughly 18 minutes, because I timed it, to go from Joshua Road to Germantown Pike. That's how bad it was. So even though I see studies all the time, and I know we've studied our bridge at least five, six times, nothing's getting done. And we were at our breaking point. I've seen rage road, road rage. I've seen accidents and total frustration. People are worried in my neighborhood about security and-